Meeting to order for April the 28th. Please stand as Commissioner, excuse me, Doria will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Gooden in our pledge of allegiance.
Last prayer. Lord, we just thank you so much for a beautiful day. We thank you for letting us come here to be part of the county's business, be with each one here today, tonight, Lord, and help us to make the right decisions for the guidance fair county. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to establishing a form. We have a full form. We have eight. Approval of agenda. Nick, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We do have one item, a case 25 S U P 353 that has come back to the Planning Commission from the Board of Supervisors as a result of their meeting last Monday night, so we would be adding this to, I would imagine, at some point in the agenda. That would be the only change I have currently.
All right, very good. Any other, that's the only thing?
That's the only thing.
Okay. Do I have a motion approved with that one change?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, vote. There we go. All right, very good. All right, approval of minutes. We have a minutes for February 24th of regular meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have approval to as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Have motion and second. Would vote please. All right, that passes. All right, that passes. That brings us to public comment period. Nick, is anyone signed up for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we do have Ms. Houchen signed up, but she is actually on the agenda for her case. Did you want to speak for public comment as well or just wait? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right, very good.
And other, the other individual is David Ball.
David, okay. Mr. Ball, please come to podium, state your full name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, David Ball, District Three. Do you want the physical address? Or do you all know? I guess I haven't been to one of these meetings in a couple of months, so I kind of miss what's been going on, but you know, I'm looking back at what the State Chamber of Commerce had initially intended to try and change Virginia's direction to be very positive for growth and change, so that we could go from the bottom of the pile to move up the ladder to become a leading state. And sadly to say, drugs, gambling, alcohol seems to be the agenda for Virginia, which is unfortunately very sad. But locally, I think one of the things that has come to my attention recently has been a disconnect where part of the county is not engaged with the rest of the county. And I say this because of the town of Dilwyn. Where is construction that normally gets listed for you guys and goes to the Board of Supervisors, has not always been what goes on in Dilwyn. I know they have tax issues, they have problems, they don't go after people who are doing construction, so nothing gets sent to the county. And if work happens, if some people get taxed, some people follow the rules, but the other half don't, then that violates the whole ethics of the constitutional government that we have in Virginia, where all are treated the same, responsible for the same obligations. So I think, and I haven't had a chance to be to the supervisors to raise this issue, but I think there needs to be a coming together to resolve all these loopholes where people, some people can do construction without permits, without obligation, and others are doing it legally. So from that standpoint, I think there needs to be a deeper review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, that's the last speaker, only speaker.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I'll close the public hearing and move the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Before I open up the public hearing, there is, if y'all remember, we had two statements that we wanted from the Planning Commission to go into the comprehensive plan. One was prepared by Commissioner Pete there and the other by County Attorney Aman Wright. So what I need is discussion on which one you would prefer to go and then a vote to approve that before I open up public hearing. So I'll open it up for discussion and your insight. Yes, sir.
Let me start off telling you, I have no pride and penmanship here. It doesn't bother me how this thing is written. I was asked to write something based on a recommendation that we indicate that we intend to keep our land use decisions in the county, and that's what was written here. So I mean, if somebody wants to change it and make it different, that's fine. I don't have any pride and penmanship in this. However, in looking at the two different statements, I don't think it ought to be soft-shoot either. You know, in writing the document, you know, my intent was to make clear that it's our intent to continue to make our own decisions. There is no law that says we can't. We in fact have a right. I think it's okay to say that we have that right. If it changes in the future, it changes. But right now, what we need to do, I think, is to assure our constituents and the people in the county that this comprehensive plan was developed in conjunction with them as well as us as appointed people and our board as elected people, and that we really have no desire nor do we have any intent in making, in having any of those decisions made outside the county. And that was the purpose of the document that I wrote. So having said that, I look at the one that was written by our attorney and I think that's way, it just doesn't, for me, it doesn't ring a bell. I'd much rather, it doesn't say what I think it should say. That's all I have to say, sir.
Okay. Any other opinions on the commission? The county attorney's main argument was the first statement that impeached, statement or declaration was the responsibility of the county but a right. He said because we're a Dillon law state, that probably was not correct to be in there, if I recall, so anyhow.
Well, excuse me again, if I read his correctly, it says which were granted to them by the state of Virginia. So we have a right. Not have a right or do we have a right?
Well, I'm just going by the statement that Mr. Roy prepared in his discussion at night, and he said that was because we're a Dillon law state, that that probably should not be in there, saying we have a right. Yes, Mr. Gooden. Yeah, Mr. Wright's here.
Can we just ask him to answer the question?
We can, yeah. plan, and Ms. Gooden has a question for you in regards to the Dillon law of Virginia.
Discussing whether or not, trying to clarify what he said.
Right.
Thing was, why not just have him tell us what he said?
I was listening to the discussion, but I.
Yeah.
Well, if I recall, and that's dangerous with my memory these days, that your main problem was with calling it a right because we are a Dillon law state.
Currently you have the authority to take that action authorized by the state. Right that could not be removed or otherwise are an authority. Confirming whether right comes from and whether it's temporary.
Let answer your question, Joe.
That's what I was, yeah, I wanted him to clarify that.
If I might ask, we currently have a right. Am I true, is that right?
You have the authority.
We have an authority?
Right is such a word of art that you have the authority delegated to your other gentleman.
Put it that way then.
Well.
Currently have the authority. I mean, it seems to me, I don't have, like I say, I have no pride and penmanship, Mr. Chairman. If you want to change it, if you want to adopt the other one, it doesn't matter. I just would like to make certain that in our comprehensive plan, we ensure that our constituents, people in this county, the residents and taxpayers understand that the comprehensive plan is a combination of their efforts as well as our efforts and the board's approval and not somebody in the state.
Next time we have one. Comprehensive plan is technically a living document with questions about whether we need jurisdictions when there is text, special. They are in that comprehensive plan, they make sure that the comprehensive plan totally aligns with the request. All of that, but the applications and the discussions getting a lot more sophisticated than it's. That documents along. I'll see call.
Chairman, you know my concern. My concern is that there were a number of bills that were passed and many of them vetoed this year that would take land use decisions out of the county, unquestionably out of the county. I'm completely opposed to that as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a landowner, and as a commissioner, I can tell you that would, to my last breath, I would fight against that.
And agreeing or not disagreeing is really not the point. Whether you use your comprehensive tool is the question.
We were going to write something, as I recall, to the legislators, saying that we intended to do our own land use decisions. I don't understand why this is any different. All that, right?
I do recall that, and you don't see any difference between comprehensive plan and that.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Did I answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Okay. All right, after we've resolved that, do we have, let's see, a favor of the committee?
At the end of the day, if we're only at the county level allowed to do over the course of this five to 10-year document what the state says we can do, then the statement is just confirming that we're going to follow the law. And if that is what this ends up being, then I think that's at a government level pretty innate, so I don't, I don't see the need for either of these statements at this point. In a five to 10-year document or whatever this ends up being, as a living document, I mean, I think the nature that we're going to follow the law is.
In other words, you're referring, do you not want either statement in or Mr. Wright's statement in?
My preference would be neither.
Okay, that's another opinion. But I'll vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be better served sending the letter that we talked about originally to Richmond. I don't think there's a place for this on the comprehensive plan either.
Okay. About the Commissioners on this end, we've got, looks like people are deciding to leave it out completely, at least so far. Any opinions required from some of the Commissioners, but not all.
Did John make a decision to pick one of these pieces of paper here?
What's that, Dan?
One of these papers, get two papers here.
Yeah, well, I will see, you know, Pete graciously wrote, was asked, and he put his in, and then Mr. Wright clarified what he thought.
I don't know which one is which. He didn't get no names on either one of them.
Right. The ordinance language is Mr. Wright's.
On both of them?
No, the larger type is Mr. Wright's. Yeah, sorry. I'll tell you what, being that we look like we are stuck in a pose right here, let's do this. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Gooden.
Just like on our documents that bring forth all federal, state, and local regulations, ordinances, and laws will be strictly adhered to following the law. And if that law can change whatever they change it to, we would have to follow that.
Right.
So us stating any of this is not going to change the fact that we have to follow the law.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Yeah.
The purpose of it, the purpose of it basically is just to, because there was so much, several bills introduced, fortunately they did, they were tabled, where a committee's at the state level was going to be formed that could come override, come and review, take, well, a perfect example, Solothurn. If the county rejected it, they, if this state, a committee was formed, that they could come in, review the case, and override the county. It would be, it would be determined by a court, but it would be by the committee. So the purpose of this was brought up to just put language and a statement in, saying that we, our comprehensive plan is done at the local level and we've all approved it now. That is, is just like Mr. Wright said, as well as Ashley, that it is somewhat of a political statement in your comprehensive plan. So if you don't feel like you want that in your conference, the political statement, then you decide on not having either one. Well, I'll tell you what we did. Let's do this. We'll go ahead and table this for now. We'll do the public hearing, and before we decide on that, on the comprehensive plan, we'll make a decision, either the one or the other, or neither. How about that? All right, Nick, do we have anybody signed up for the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we're right back where we were.
That was a short break for you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What if we, and this is, you know, I'm a little confused, but what if we adopt one of these? I mean, we do take one and put it in a comprehensive plan and also send a letter to Richmond. I mean, I think we need to be heard, and I'm a little torn. I mean, either one would work, I think, but that's my feeling, that's my thought.
The request for the letter to be sent to Richmond was given and delivered to the Board of Supervisors, so to my knowledge, that is.
Right, that's, that will not be in the comprehensive plan. It's coming from the board. Yeah, just to state our objection to those potential changes in a law, in a code. All right, just had discussion. Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I move that not accept either of these, but rely on the letter written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Go ahead and pick the button.
Any further discussion on this?
Now you go.
Call for the vote. Public Commissioners, any discussion?
I think as long as we being heard to Richmond, you know, to get that point across, whereas here or there, but yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote then. So neither will, statement will be included in the comprehensive plan. Now, that brings us back to our comprehensive plan. Any discussion? I mean, we've been over this. We made some minor changes the last time, which were included in the package, so any discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll vote. That passes unanimously. Very good. All right, Rick, Nicky, that's going to bring us to a new business, introduction of the Hotchkins.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Yes, our first case for introduction this evening is 25 S U P 356. It is Mary and Charles Houchens of 515 Capetown Creek Road, Dilwyn. Their tax map is 173 parcel 43 containing just at three acres, and it is located in District Two. It's currently zoned A1. Their request before you this evening is to obtain a special use permit to operate a commercial garage and auto repair shop. The applicant is asking the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for this request. I have attached 11 standard conditions for the special use permit that of course many could be amended, added, deleted, whatever the pleasure of the Planning Commission. Would it be the pleasure of the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for this request? And the next monthly meeting is May 27th, which is a Tuesday after the Monday holiday at 6:00 P. M. Also, Mr. and Ms. Houchens are in the audience this evening to discuss their request.
Okay. Would the applicant come forward and just give us a quick summary of what you would like to do?
I hate speaking in public. Basically, what we want to do is be able to work on our vehicles and our friends' vehicles. We're not looking to open a major garage, small time, just, you know, to be able to have extra vehicles in the yard while we're maintaining them and working on them. We have several, quite a few Mustangs. We enjoy Mustangs. We go on trips and take the kids. They've already picked out which ones they want and have all but planned our funeral. So they know which ones they want to get when we're no longer here. But the main thing, we have a lot of extra ones, and when we find those, we find those for parts because the parts for the older vehicles have gotten so expensive and so hard to find. So we do have several vehicles on our property that are inoperable, but they're like a gold mine to us because they have parts that we need to fix, the ones that we keep running. So we're just asking for the chance to, one, be able to keep the ones that we have to maintain our vehicles and to be able to help our friends if they need to have their vehicles worked on also.
Okay.
Not trying to become millionaires and make big bucks. We just want to, you know, be able to help out with them and help ourselves.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Pete, go ahead.
May I ask, the vehicles that are in your, on your property right now, they're, some are inoperable, correct? Is that what you just said?
Yes, sir.
And you intend to build a building there to house them?
That is our hope too.
All right, so are you intending at all to become a commercial organ? In other words, you're going to charge for the services you provide?
For some people, we would charge a little bit, but it's not going to be, it's not like we're doing any advertising or putting up any garage signs or anything like that. It would just be for my husband to make a few dollars to put in his pocket if somebody needed some work done.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, are you looking, I guess if I were looking at it objectively, I would say, well, basically you're looking, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but are you looking to cover your expenses or are you really looking to become a profitable business?
Basically, just cover expenses. We're not.
Okay, so.
I work, I deliver mail, and my husband stays home with the kids so that he can be there in the afternoons to get them off of the bus, holidays, summers, stuff like that. So if he could just make a few dollars to put in his pocket, that's.
Okay, so let me ask the question to Ms. Edmondson. maintain our vehicles and to be able to help our friends if they need to have their vehicles worked on also.
Okay.
Not trying to become millionaires and make big bucks. We just want to, you know, be able to help out with them and help ourselves.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Pete, go ahead.
May I ask, uh, the, the vehicles that are in your, on your property right now, they're, some are inoperable, correct? Is that what you just said?
Yes, sir.
And you intend to build a building there to house them?
That is our hope too.
All right, so are, are you intending at all to become a commercial organ? In other words, you're going to charge for the services you provide?
For some people, we would charge a little bit, but it, it's not going to be, it, it's not like we're doing any advertising or putting up any garage signs or anything like that. It would just be for my husband to make a few dollars to put in his pocket if somebody needed some work done.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, are you looking, I guess if I were looking at it objectively, I would say, well, basically you're looking to, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but are you looking to cover your expenses or are you really looking to become a profitable business?
Basically, just cover expenses. We're not...
Okay, so...
I work, I deliver mail, and my husband stays home with the kids so that he can be there in the afternoons to get them off of the bus, holidays, summers, stuff like that. So if he could just make a few dollars to put in his pocket, that's...
Okay, so let me ask the question to Ms. Edmondson. If, uh, if someone has a piece of property and they do not intend to use it commercially, they want to put up a garage and they want to do work on their vehicles and other people's vehicles, and it's not a commercial business, there's still a need for them to come here to get permission?
Let me give you a little bit more background on the case.
All right.
So this case came to us, or Mr. and Ms. Houchen said, by way of a, a complaint, of a zoning complaint in regards to the number of vehicles on their property. So after a couple of visits to the house and, uh, numerous letters to Ms. Houchens, she's, it's always been nice enough to give us a call back and explain what's going on, um, there are probably 19 vehicles. I would say 12 to 14, please, if I get the number correct, are correctly titled, registered, and current on their taxes here in the county of Buckingham. When she, our definition to inoperable vehicles is actually those that have no ability to run and are, or out in the weather. We don't, and as far as running, the determination has been, does it start? Some of the vehicles might require a spark plug or a battery, as been told to me by, uh, Ms. Houchen, so she said, but seven are what would be categorized as what needs something additional, but they probably would start. So she did indicate when I called her that she doesn't operate a business, but she said that she does have lots of people that come to her because her husband has been a mechanic since he was 10 years old.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, I was close. Um, so, and they are Ford Mustang enthusiasts, so there are quite a few Mustangs on the property. You know, this would allow them to, um, actually take some of the requests. They've turned work down, as Mitchal, Ms. Houchens has told me before, because most people, they're do it for friends and family and they try to help them out. I'm sure they would, I don't know how they would operate the business and I don't want to answer for them, and this would be the best place for Ms. Houchens to come in, but if you're, we do not have something in the zoning ordinance that says that you can have a garage just for people, because the pretense is that there's a business operation going on there. If I'm not working on my own cars and I'm working on lots of other people's, then that would be the existence of a garage, whether you, you pay me with just your kindness and a handshake, or you bring the parts with you, that, that is a auto garage. So if I, if I have a large garage on my property and I'm fixing anything that's not mine for other people, I'm operating a business. We typically don't get into what their financial statements are and how much money they receive back and forth, but if they're doing something that is not for their, their real estate, their, uh, personal property, cars and vehicles and tractors, then it is a business.
All right, then let me ask you this question. I've been by the property and there is a lot of, lot of vehicles out there.
Right.
So, and again, I'll ask Ms. Edmondson this, I mean, with regard to those disabled vehicles, is it more of a salvage yard that these people have? I mean, is that what you...
That would be a better question for Mr. and Ms. Houchens.
Yeah, these vehicles are going to remain outside. Are they, basically, they're there for salvage?
Well, I, I guess in a way you could say they're, they're there for parts. If you've been by, you notice there's a red one. I'll use this as an example, sitting in the driveway. That is a 77.
Seventy-seven.
In the back of the property, there's another one that will never be on the road again.
But all the parts, like the interior, is like in mint condition.
Is going to be used to put the 77 back together. Then once that one is finished, the other one, he'll take to the, sorry, to the scrapyard. So they're not going to be there forever. You know, we don't plan on leaving them there and crushing them with a truck or anything, but...
They're away already.
Yeah.
I took them away here in the last three weeks.
And we have, uh...
I got the parts off, didn't he? One of them was my friend's car that's been there since his dad passed away. Worked on it. He was bringing, he didn't know how to work on it. So he brought it there two weeks ago. He drove it up on a trailer, took it home. So it's gone. I G, gone. I took it back to my buddy's house. I got it up there. I'm getting ready to go to his house.
So we are slowly...
I mean, I'm eliminating them out. I'm just, I'm one person. And I have two kids, like I said, that they love cars too. They've already spoke for the cars that they want. And the little man, he wanted to fix the car, that's the parts car for Maddie's, because the 177 is Maddie's car. He wanted to fix that one. I said, "Son, are there all the cars in the yard? Can you leak some with wheels on it?" He said, "No, Granny, I want to build it from the ground up." I mean, he's been in cars since he was six years. He's been over five now, so I mean, he is...
They've, that's all they've...
They know cars just like their grandparent.
I went outside about three weeks ago to tell them that dinner was ready, and all I see is four feet coming out underneath the car. He's under the car and Madison's under the car helping him. So it's, it's a good learning experience for them also to, you know, where they're getting hands-on experience and knowledge of, you know, having a car is not just getting in it, starting it up and putting gas in it. It takes a lot to maintain them.
But you do intend to build a garage?
I don't know. We want to build a larger garage than what we have, so we have more room. But I mean, it's not going to be like a 30 by 50. It's, what was it? Was it 20?
Twenty by 20, what I looked at the other day.
You know, just something where we have enough room.
I like to do a lease of 20 by 20, I mean...
You can't work but on one vehicle at a time when you're working by yourself. So you don't need this huge, you know, monster garage. Just need something that houses the toolboxes and, you know, be able to pull a car in there and work around it without bumping into something every time you move.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Goodman.
I went by there and looked at the property, and my first impression was looking at it as like, none of these cars are going anywhere. It does look like a salvage yard to me, but I'm not a car enthusiast. I'm the person that puts gas in the car. Got it, okay. So, um, and, uh, and I understand family projects and, you know, that carrying on a family tradition with things, but what I'm looking at is the use of the land and what's on the land and how it appears now. So how many cars are actually on that property? Because I saw trucks with hoods up, I saw, um, plastic bags covering windows and...
Plastic bags, that car actually runs, somebody knocked the window out of it.
That car actually...
Yes, that car runs. Put a trash bag on the window to keep the rain out of it.
Okay.
Somebody knocked the window out.
So how many cars do you have out there? Because to me, they're like backed into the, I want to say backed into the edge of the woods. And I was looking, I just saw, to me, I just saw cars everywhere, hoods up, things hanging, and it was like, so, so how many cars are there? And, um, how many actually could run of that number? And where in the world are you going to put a garage?
The garage is already in my driveway. So if you're looking at my driveway...
Yes.
I have a 12 by 28 there. For all the metal that I've been gathering up, metal. Yeah, I used to scrap metal for years.
Okay.
Some of that's left over because the metal price was down, but the metal price is back up, so I've been breaking it back down, taking it off. But I had like 20 air conditioners stacked in one pile. Well, all them air conditioners, you break them down and you get the ores and the copper and this, and it all pays the price. Well, the price was way down. The price is now up, where it's worth taking off. That's where I'm going to put the building at, right there beside it.
I'm trying to count.
I'm, excuse me, Supervisor, Commissioner Gooden, um, I have an email that I reported back to our county administrator and county attorney on March 12th after our first discussion with Ms. Houchens in regards to the complaint, and it states, um, "I'm sending a letter to Mr. and Ms. Houchens. She has contacted us. She states that her husband is a Mustang enthusiast and does have quite a large number of vehicles currently on the property. She gave a count of approximately 20, with 10 to 12 on insurance, two with antique plates, one rollback with commercial insurance, and two mail vehicles. There are other vehicles that are in a stage of parts repair. She indicated she may have five that would meet the definition of inoperable, but was checking with her husband to make sure." I believe she gave me a final count of nine on the phone, but when she came in, it was seven vehicles that may potentially be inoperable. Yes, ma'am?
So it's 15 on a list of inoperable on their list of things that they're supposed to do. Number five, it's 15. So you think it'd be good with 15? Think 15 would be good, or you, you need more?
Yes, 15 is good.
That yard.
Okay. It's, it's just on your list, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm just thinking some of those, again, not a car enthusiast, but it's just, um...
So if they're not a commercial business, are they currently in violation of anything right now?
They're in violation, yes, of the zoning ordinance because you're not allowed, no home is allowed to have mo, uh, more than four inoperable vehicles. Remember, inoperable is that it can't start, it sets out in the weather. It doesn't mean that I can drive it to Dilwyn. It means that it does not start. If it requires a battery to start, then it's operable. They, anytime you're operating a garage, you know, whether you're paid or not, and you're operating a garage and people are coming to your property and you're fixing things for them, I'm not asking people how they're getting paid because the impression is, the perception is, someone is operating a business. That has never, the, during the course of contact with Ms. Houchens, they have not been operating a business. She is now coming, when she said she would come into compliance, she asked because her husband has the knowledge and ability and said, "Well, maybe we may want to request from the county a special use permit to operate a business." That's why they're here now.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
It's just, it, to me, it sounds like you have a problem with your neighbors and the people around you, and by getting a business permit, I don't think it's going to help you because you, you might need to put a fence around everything you have to, to make...
I had talked about putting a fence and I, and she said right now, with what's going on, the fence wouldn't cure the problem because of the few vehicles that will not run.
Since we'd already been reported that the issue had to be resolved before...
In which I don't have a problem with a fence.
I mean, we don't have a problem putting up a privacy fence in the front yard. We'll do, you know, what needs to be done.
We just don't want to have to keep dealing with this and coming back and holding up y'all's time or anybody else's time.
It just sounds like you, you need to get rid of some, get rid of some vehicles and clean it up, and if you have to put a fence around it to get the, get your neighbors happy and all, I think that's probably where you, where it came in, with the neighbors, wasn't it? But I don't even know why you need a permit to do that, but like Nikki said, if you're going to keep doing it, but I don't think it's going to resolve anything if you keep doing it like you're doing it, so...
Well, that's a part of the application we can require is, uh, privacy fence be put up, at least to obstruct the view. We can also limit the number of vehicles. We've done that before, so, uh, right, uh, so we can do that. I have a quick question. I know you said you was going to build a shop, enlarge a shop, and I understand that. As far as the vehicles that you're, you know, using for parts, and I understand that too, uh, you don't have a building at this time for that, they're just parked out, right?
Yes.
They're, they're just parked outside.
And the plan's still to just continue that, but just enlarge where you're working on, on vehicles?
Yeah, I wanted, like I said, kind of put some out of sight, you know, in the building, so that way, and they're in, the building is easier for me to get the parts off of this one, to put it on that one.
Right, okay.
Where, right now, I'm done, took some parts off, yes. There's some right there that has no motors in it.
Right.
But they're getting ready to go to the scrapyard, because I've gotten the parts that I need, so I don't need them no longer, they'll go to the scrapyard. That's what I do, like I said, when I get the parts I need, or, like I said, I had five that did not belong to me, that were that, and that was incarcerated. He was going to lose his vehicles. I brought them to my house so he wouldn't lose them. He's incarcerated. I took them back to his house.
Well, you've taken, taken one, got one more.
Got one more to take to him, you know, if he does. Two belongs to my daughter, getting ready to take them to her house. So when you come by, you're going to be like, well, there's four of these.
We're, we're slowly weeding them out.
It's just, I'm one, like I said, I'm one person. I try to do as much as I can. My health has not been the greatest. I had COVID a couple of years back. I fought that, they about took me out. I finally got to where I can actually get out and do stuff again. I would go from here to where they're sitting, I'd be out of breath. So I could walk across my field and I was out of breath. I'd get over to work on something, I'd have to sit down 10 minutes. I've just gotten where I can actually get out and do stuff again. I, I'm trying my best to get everything, to make everybody happy, along with my neighbors. I don't want to piss, piss nobody off. But I don't want to be, feel I got to get rid of my cars...
Right.
To make them happy.
You go.
I, I've had a passion with, I grew up working on cars with my brother. My brother was a Chevy man. The car I bought was a Chevy. It broke down. I bought a Ford and it carried me around. So I've been a Ford person ever since. Look in my yard, yes, you'll see a bunch of Fords. Yes, I have a couple of hoods up. The ones that's got the hood up, I'm getting parts on them to get them going, and I'll just leave the hood up, go in the house and go. I should shut the hood down. Yes, ma'am, I agree with you.
My, what I'm looking at, again, um, I have compassion for your health, because I'm a nurse, okay? Old nurse, I can say it that way. So I have compassion for your health, and I am truly glad that you've recovered, but your health is not my issue. It's the number of vehicles are there, what's there, and listening to Commissioner Doria say, you know, there are other problems that you reported, and then, oh, well, if I do it this way, I can still have the cars out there. That's the part that I'm not, uh, I don't feel good about. It's not your health, not what you're doing with generations and what you do with your grands and, you know, your kids. That's fine. And, you know, the family time together, that's fine. Uh, but it still looks like, it looks like a salvage yard, and I don't know what it was reported as being before, but with, where things are just out there. And I, I have an issue with that, and that there was a report, and then you came and say, "Well, if I do it this way, it'll be okay and I can keep all my cars out there." And the speed that you are removing cars, um, that seems relatively slow to me. I don't know about the speed. We sat on a committee and we never resolved what to do with the cars that are sitting on property and how many cars there should be inoperable. So, um, but I have an issue that there was a report, and they come in and say, "Well, if I come in almost the back way and then I can fix it this way and I can keep all my cars out there." That's my issue. Not your health, not your family time, not your family traditions.
And there's a question from the Commissioners.
The only other thing I would say is, you know, we already see that it's on this number five, 15 inoperable vehicles can be on the property, but now we talk about all the people seeing too much stuff, so you might want to put a fence around to cover it up so people won't see it, and that'll slow your complaints down. All right. To me, we just need to add that into this, into it, and add it to number 12.
Go ahead.
So 15 inoperable, sounds like a lot to me. On our last application, did we have a limit on total, whether they were inoperable or operable? Like, I think 15 total is a number than 15 inoperable. Does that put you guys out if we just said total number and not just inoperable?
I mean, we have, just on our insurance, um...
And I'll ask Nikki while you're counting, um, it says outside of the main structure. Does that exclude their personal vehicles or does that include their personal vehicles?
If the special use permit would include any vehicles on, I mean, if, in the last case, um, that just went through that's come back to us, it was 10 parked vehicles. It was...
Parked, right.
10 parked, and that, um, through the minutes of the meeting meant that they were operable, nothing inoperable. Now, as a household, um, four, more than four is a violation, so if personally they have more than four, so, but they can't co-mingle, I can't... But they can't co-mingle. I can't have four over here for the business and, or, you know, three for the business and then I'll throw my personal in. I mean, at this point with a special use permit, they're asking a special type of permission from the county. So at this point, you could say on the entire, or you could say whatever you wanted to as a planning commission. An example would be on the entire premises, no more than five, six, eight, you know, and that would mean them personally or the operation of their business.
I think I've got it counted right. I think we have ten on the insurance.
Would you be opposed to putting up a privacy fence, you know, a board fence, sort of block of view? That's, I think Supervisor Allen's suggestion is a good one. I will also ask if the commissioner wants to set a limit on the vehicle, number of vehicles can be there at any one time. You could frame it as a number. It can be either, you know, just a total and that can be a whatever, this many inoperable and this many operable.
And Mr. Chairman, I, having been by the properties, I mentioned, I, I'm sort of in the same view as the rest of the commissioners here was, it's a bit messy. Trying to put it gently. But my point is, and I think everybody else's point, is what can you do to neaten it up? And maybe that would require a significant drop in the number of vehicles inoperable and operable you have on your property. I know you say you've got ten insured. That implies to me that you've got ten that you own. All right, so, I mean, and again, that all by itself is a violation, obviously.
Not if they're operable. It's inoperable and exposed to the weather. So, I mean, you can own fifteen vehicles.
You can have as many as are inoperable, okay.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so, but you've got ten of your own, obviously. Obviously, you have a, you have a collection. So, I don't know. I think, uh...
I mean, I have three that are just mail vehicles because I have to, my route requires I have my own vehicle. I work six days a week. If my vehicle breaks down, I can't get home at five o'clock in the afternoon and think he has time to fix it for me to go back out the next day. So I have to have a backup. And I went through three vehicles in one week with transmissions and, you know, mechanical issues. So it's, it's a lot to keep them going.
Yeah, I think, uh, if, personal opinion, again, I don't run a salvage yard, but if I were looking at this as, if you had a significant number of inoperable vehicles that you were using for parts, one way or the other, either selling them or using them on other vehicles, that's salvage, all right? So what you end up with is a salvage yard. And I don't know, I don't know what the appropriate answer here is. If you really intend to have a lot of vehicles around so that you can trade out parts, then, then you've got a salvage yard. That's what you've got. And I don't know that that's what you're requesting. It seems to me you're requesting a garage or a repair shop of some sort. And, and you may need a few of those vehicles in order to trade out parts. And my suggestion would be that you get your vehicle, trade out your parts and then get rid of the vehicle. If you need another one, you go out and get another one. If, if I were looking at this from the outside of this viewpoint and I were concerned, I were a neighbor that were concerned about, about the neighborhood and the look of it, my recommendation would be, you know, go ahead and be, be a repair shop, but don't have that many inoperable vehicles around. And when you're done with them, get rid of them. So I would probably either have a condition in here or, you know, adjust the condition in here to make sure that there were a minimum number, a minimum number of inoperable vehicles.
Exposed to the weather. So if we were to like build a pole barn type building and have it where it's, you know, something that covers the front where the vehicles can't be seen, then they're not actually exposed to weather, whether they run or not, correct?
Yeah, I would, I'm talking about parked vehicles. I would assume that would mean out in the open. Help me out here, guys. I don't...
I don't know. I mean, it seems to me like this is ninety-five percent hobby and maybe five percent business.
That's right.
And it seems the application is to run a business, but it doesn't really seem like there's much business being run, so...
If somebody comes and asks me to work on it, I don't want to get in trouble. If y'all say I can't have a business, I work on somebody's car and get paid and next thing you know, I'm in trouble with the county again. So at least this way, I've covered myself if they do come. Like, she says, you know, I do work on cars. You know, I'm good at it. That's the only thing I really know, that, that and landscaping, you know? So, I mean, if they hear of a garage that's going to be cheaper, they will come. Garages these days get a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollars an hour to work on cars. They find a country boy that's doing it for seventy-five dollars an hour. Where are you going to take your vehicle to? Where the seventy-five dollars an hour is. So, I mean, if I do start a business, I don't want to get rich like my wife says. I just want to go out, do a little brake job, do a little oil change. I don't want, I cleaned enough motors and transmissions that my wife tears up. I don't need to take and do anybody else's motors and transmissions. I got a job full-time just keeping her vehicles going. Like she said, she has three mail vehicles. By the time I finish this one, she calls me and it's broke down. I carry this one over here, give it to her and I take the other one home and start working on it. Because we don't have no other way. If I don't have her vehicles going, we don't have that money coming in.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Is there a way that they can step back and reassess what their options are at home other than trying to stand it in this out and then decide?
Well, I mean, yeah, we could table it and they could re-assess what they want to do. I was going to ask, uh, normally on the property, how many inoperable, inoperable you have normally at one time?
Like nineteen on there right now.
How many? I'm sorry.
Like nineteen between drivable and inoperable. But it, it's a huge number. Now, like he said, we have the truck that's leaving hopefully next week.
Well, let me...
Looks like today our future grandson-in-law, his car is leaving in just a couple of weeks. Our daughter's car is going to her house. So we do have plans to, to downsize. But it's, it's just, it will take a while. I mean, it can't be done overnight.
Would you be comfortable, would it fit with your plans if you, we said you had twenty vehicles, fifteen inoperable and five, five that are, that are actually operable, you're just finishing up on? Would that...
Fifteen for inoperable?
Fifteen inoperable and five operable. I'm trying to get to a total here so we can...
Well, we have more than five on the insurance that we drive.
That actually run, yes.
We have at least ten.
I have four that's antique tags.
All right. What, again, I'll ask you, what...
We would be better off probably with ten and ten.
Ten and ten, okay.
Or, or twelve and eight, eight inoperable, twelve operable.
But the twenty number, you, you feel like that's...
We could work with twenty, yes.
So, do you want to, what I'm looking at is number five and we can change that to fit where it's twelve inoperable and eight operable. And that's the most you can have at any time? Or you want it the other way around?
Yeah, twelve operable.
Oh, twelve operable and eight.
Eight inoperable.
Okay, okay.
You're, I, don't, I apologize for interjecting. I just need to understand these for the conditions. So you're referring to operable vehicles as they would pertain to the request to operate a business under the special use permit, not for them personally? Because if they're, I know we put parked vehicles for Applegate, that, that S U P. I'm trying to, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand the condition. I apologize.
As well as we are.
That's all vehicles, ain't all vehicles with license on it, did they tell me?
Operable, we don't have an ordinance against, I mean, I could park a hundred operable vehicles at my house.
Well, in their situation with the neighbors and all, that's why I was trying to come to a reasonable number on the property that would keep the neighbors happy, but not handcuff them in what they want to do as far as their little business. So that twenty was just an arbitrary number I picked, but if that will work.
Because that would, you, Ms. Houchins, you said you have how many that are operable right now? Let's just for twelve, fourteen?
At least twelve.
So if you had twelve and then you operate your business and you have no more than eight, then between your personal usage and the vehicles that you prepare for your business, you have twenty operable vehicles there. Can't have any more than twenty. That would include your personal use and that would be what you've worked on and is ready to roll out. Somebody's coming to make payment and pick them up.
That's what I was...
That, what?
Slowly getting there, but I was trying to get there.
And I'm slow this evening, so...
Now, that does exclude your personal vehicles, correct, which you can have four. Is that what you told me?
That are inoperable.
Then inoperable, that's right.
More than four.
Yeah.
Inoperable vehicles for any individual in the county.
But you want those operable because you're using them. I'm not too concerned.
Those are twenty.
So if we just say you can't have, other than your personal vehicle, you can't have the twenty on the property at any one time, and that way you don't have to worry about how many are operable or how many are inoperable. And would that work with this scenario that y'all are trying to establish? If it doesn't, you know, if, if this were to go on through in a year from now, you get more busy, you can always come back and we can, you know, look about adjusting that up if necessary. But just make sure that's feel, you feel comfortable with that number. Because I, I was going to add that number five, we'll just change it to twenty vehicles, period, at any one time.
And that's per the permit? That excludes, like you said, our personal vehicles?
Excludes the personals, yes. That's just your business stuff. Whatever you're working on for parts and whatever you're, you know, having worked, working on to get them running. So, and, and Mr. Supervisor Allen's the privacy fence. And that way you wouldn't have, I mean, it's up to your call. I think if you put the privacy fence, it probably would not be necessary for the pole barn unless you wanted to protect the cars themselves. So I don't want to hit you with both unless, unless you choose to do that. That's an addition.
Rather do the pole barn than the fence? That way... Out of the weather.
A big, well, six-foot fence.
It's too just...
Board fence. Those privacy fences are, you know, they're six foot tall aboard fences.
Six to eight foot tall, right? I was going to do...
And that only has to be across the front of the property. It doesn't have to go all the way around, does it?
No, just across for now unless, what do you have? I haven't had a chance to visit it yet. In front, if you put it in front, will that block the view from your neighbors? That's all. That's just for privacy fence. Just try to...
And then do like a little corner piece at the end.
Is there timber there? Feet is...
Yeah, we're surrounded by woods.
Yeah, we're surrounded by woods all around.
Okay, so all you really have to do is block the front, is what you're saying.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm completely confused at this point in time. I don't know how many cars they're going to have there. So we're going to have twenty cars that they can work on, either operable and inoperable? And then they're going to have their ten vehicles besides?
No, they'll have twenty maximum for the business, either, either operable or inoperable.
And then whatever number of vehicles they want to have for themselves?
Just the personal, yeah.
So we have Applegate that we just approved ten parked vehicles for, right?
Right.
And we're allowing twenty parked vehicles here. Is that what you're saying?
That, that was the number I put out. I mean, if you want to adjust it, I don't know if ten will work with them because right now they got, how many did you say? Nine? Seven already working on?
I don't remember how many you worked.
Well, you tell, you suggested that you had about twenty vehicles or eighteen or whatever the number is.
We have fourteen that run.
And you've got ten that you've insured, which are the ten personal vehicles of yours, which are not included in this. So right now you've got roughly ten parked vehicles for your business. Am I correct?
Well, they're, the ones that run are our personal vehicles. They're not for the business.
And there are ten of those that you've insured. And you've got a grand total of eighteen or nineteen on your property? So you've got roughly nine parked vehicles. I'm looking just at your business.
Yeah, we have probably nine vehicles that are used.
So why do we need any more than we approved for Applegate? Why don't we have just, if they've got all these personal vehicles, why are we, why are we not allowing just ten parked vehicles, whether they're operable or inoperable for their business? They got three acres. That's my question.
I'll ask that. Can you work with that? Is that two, or is that two limited in your two pots? What he said, Mr. Kapaneski is suggesting, rather than twenty vehicles, you only have ten there at one time.
For your business.
For your business.
Once you get them running, they're no longer... Correct. So if we do the ten... Inoperable.
Yeah, I understand the business as, if, I suggest the twenty, Mr. Kapaneski is saying, would teach correct. We approved one a couple of months ago and we were restricted him to ten.
Split the difference and do fifteen? Or would that be too much? I just ask.
If you're asking me, I suggest you go to ten because you've got as many personal vehicles running as you, as you want. You've got all these personal vehicles that you're already covered for. So it seems to me that you're not, with regard to what you told us, you're not working with any more than ten vehicles at any one time. So quite frankly, why do you need any more than ten vehicles?
Ten's good.
Ten would be fine. We could work with ten.
Okay, all right, so, yes.
To add to the confusion, of the ones that are there now, the eighteen, whatever number it was, how many would you say right now are part of a business or are these all your personal?
They're all, all of these are ours. There's nothing on there that has been brought to us for business purpose.
Are we saying we're going to allow all those plus ten more or fifteen more? What do we say?
Yeah, and then...
Well, the ones that don't run would fall in under the inoperable business, the way I'm looking at it, because we're using those to fix up our vehicles. Now, if he, you know, somebody brings something to him and they need a brake job done, I mean, the chances of that vehicle sitting there for more than overnight is slim to none, you know? If they say they brought it at five, six o'clock in the evening and I need my brakes, well, he's going to do it the next morning and they're going to pick it up the next day. So... And then, of course, as he gets the parts and stuff off of these vehicles, a lot of them are going to be going bye-bye. We just got to have the time to do that.
So an answer to your question would be ten, other than those that are titled and licensed to them, they're allowed ten vehicles on their property. Does that make it clear? Whether they're operable or inoperable? That's what I'm viewing.
So then you might end up with thirty vehicles.
Well, if he's got twenty, according to Nikki, he can have twenty operable vehicles that are his own. And we have no control over that. Maybe you could do that now.
We pay our taxes. We buy our county stickers. We pay insurance. We get them inspected.
Yeah, so I'm only interested in your business.
Follow the law on all of our vehicles that are tagged and titled. They're legal.
So...
County sticker inspection, insurance, everything.
So if it's yours, if it's tagged and titled to you, that's outside the consideration here. What we're looking at is your business. And we're saying no more than ten operable and/or inoperable vehicles in your, in your business. If you, that's the condition that I'm recommending.
Yes, Chairman?
Question from Nikki. It's been a long day for me and I may be missing it, but I don't see a driveway permit at all here.
We have that. I apologize. It was left out of the documents. Jamie's going to put it on screen for everyone now. It was forwarded on the due date, which was April fourth from Brian Locker. I have his auto signature for his email and also the inclusion of the email from Brian stating that he'd been there. And Brian being Brian Locker with P. Dot. Thank you for asking. Yes, sir.
A second question to you, Ms. Anderson. Is there normally a condition in here that says the owner is also the person requesting and do we need that here?
It's going to be your last condition. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
That the applicant and landowner, and in this case, the applicant and the landowner is the exact same person, understands the conditions and agrees to. Yes, sir.
Standard, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And on that Applegate one, didn't we have a condition in there about, you know, the vehicles for your... Vehicles for your business can only be there for a certain amount of time?
Nope, it wasn't a time period. I actually have his case here because we're going to discuss that a little bit later. Nope, it wasn't a time period. I actually have his case here because we're going to discuss that a little bit later. He has the eleven conditions that you see for Mr. and Ms. Houchens with the addition of two. One being number five was changed to there shall be no more than ten parked vehicles and or machinery, equipment outside of the main structure, which he had a garage on his property. And number six, privacy fence to be installed should there be any removal of natural vegetation on the property. And number five was already there. It was just changed to ten. He also had the addition of a holding tank shall be installed adequate to hold any fluids with a catch basin.
Is that, that's a, that, how are you going to take care of your fluids?
I recycle mine at the van store and everything. I catch in my drugs. I go up there and pour it. Tank at the van store. All mine back in that.
That has to be a condition? Have to put that in as a condition?
Yeah, I mean, you can make a condition. It sounds like he's already doing it, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have it as a condition.
I think we ought to add that as a condition, just to make sure you're doing it.
Okay. All right.
What would number four be, that?
No, the solid waste container is actually part of the solid waste ordinance as far as a dumpster him throwing his trash away. And this would not be considered anything that would be handled by the solid waste.
Nikki, you got those changes for the bylaws, conditions?
Only one that I have a question for is the number of vehicles. Let's go back to that. Mr. Kapinski brought up ten.
Ten.
Ten for the business.
Yeah, they've they've agreed that that would be wouldn't hinder their business.
Okay, all fluids to be incorrect basins and per the applicant would be recycled as indicated.
I think it'd be the same.
As the catch basin?
Yeah.
I'll include the catch basin, just as we did with the Applegate case. And then the privacy fence?
Yes, on the front of the property.
Are there any specifics for the privacy fence? Are you asking?
Well, normally they're six foot, six or eight feet board fence.
And I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How far from the road do we have to go back to do the fence, to set the fence back?
I've, yeah, you make sure you have to get it out of the highway right away. But I think in this situation, you could set it back farther if you chose to. It's really just to instruct the view. So I think, you know, as long as you you put it where you feel comfortable. Any more discussion from the commissioners? I need to, do I have a motion to move this forward or?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that given the conditions as rewritten, that we move this to a public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? See you none will vote. Okay, I pass this on forward to your co-public hearing next month.
Yes, May twenty seventh. Yes, sir.
We'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, Nikki, that brings us to this case twenty five, D.A.S. S.U.P. three fifty seven, Sanders and Wymer.
Yes, sir. This case, our applicants are Philip Sandridge and David Wymer. The property information and on which the request is being made is Tax Map twenty two parcel one lot thirty. It's just at four point two acres. And it is located on Hathcock Lane in Howardsville. This is in District Two. It's currently zoned A one. And the request is to obtain a special use permit to operate a campground. And the applicant is asking the planning commission to hold a public hearing for this request. And there are fourteen conditions attached to this request. Our applicants are here in the audience this evening to address questions and concerns.
Okay, gentlemen, if y'all would come forward and give us a quick summary of what you'd like to do.
Pass.
We bought the property in nineteen ninety-two to hunt on. A little background and 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 we owned it. And when we both retired, we decided to go over and clear the land and we put some campers on it. And we've had complaints about, there's four campers and it's all family. There's, we're not li- um doing the campground to gain money by. It's all family and friends, you know. It might be a camper come in the weekend and they leave. But we have four permanent campers. And we want to know whether or not we can do this because we're planning on doing a sewer system. And I don't want to do that until we're approved for the campground. And it it's four campers.
It's a family camp.
Yeah, it's a fam- yeah.
We go over probably twice a month during the summer months. And like I said, we've just cleared it off in two thousand twenty-one. Very well maintained. But in order for us to use campers there, we have to apply for a family campground.
All right, any questions? Yes, Chairman. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Go ahead, John.
I have a question. You have campers out there now?
Yes, ma'am.
Then obviously I didn't go far enough back, okay?
No, ma'am.
I went down to there was a large green field in the, in a curve. I kept going and then I saw the river. And there was a camper that looked like it was not being used.
Well, you didn't go.
You didn't go far enough.
So I didn't follow that road further.
If you would go all the way to the end.
To the end, to the river.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's not to the river. It's actually four lots past that. There's a house on the other side of us and then there's three actual river lots past that. So you didn't go far enough.
I started to send up, I started to send up, send a SOS.
It's very well made, Dave.
As it was.
Yeah, we we keep it mowed and we eat it and.
Oh, it's neat. It's neat because I thought that open space was where you were going to put the campers. They're up and further back. Okay. I started just to send up a flag and flare to let somebody know I was back there.
Most people back there don't like people around them.
Oh.
What the problem is that we're having, so.
Okay.
Please, Chief, go ahead. Yeah, I fortunately or unfortunately, I did make it all the way back. And you're right, it's right at the end before there's a two route that goes up a, up a hill. But the question I'd have is I saw one big house on stilts. And is that a flood plain?
It is.
So if there is a flood, I mean, are those campers there twelve months out of the year?
We we pull them out.
You pull them out?
Yeah.
When it's high water, we pull them out.
Where, where do you put them?
Take them up.
Higher. We have thirty acres that it joins.
Okay, up above where the other lots are?
The road that you saw that went up the mountain?
Yeah.
Up the hill?
Yeah.
That goes back around and we have the other thirty acres on the top.
Okay, so again, this is, from what I understand, the only, the only thing I saw that was, that made it look more like a campground was the fact you're going to put a, a, a large septic system and I would assume to service these campers. And then they would stay there six, what, twelve months out of the year?
No, we.
We're just, it's, we, all we want to do is use it to basically.
During the summer.
During the summer.
But I mean, the campers would remain there. You're not going to move those campers out.
They are movable.
They are movable, but we're.
But you don't intend to move them, right? I mean, are they going to, there's four right, there's four there right now.
Right. Two of, one of them belongs to me, one belongs to Phil. We leave ours there. The smallest one belongs to my wife's cousin and he takes it in and out.
All right.
Go somewhere. The other one belongs to my daughter.
All right, so again.
Though daughter will probably stay.
Let me ask this question, Ms. Evanson. I I'm not quite certain of how the zoning laws work here in that regard. But I mean, again, it's a private piece of property.
Zoning ordinance does not allow for a campground, period.
But I mean, is it, is it considered a campground if they've got their relatives and friends with their campers?
And there's also the issue with the health department needing, in order to do the septic system for this number of campers, it's a campground which comes back to the county ordinance, which does not allow a campground by right. It doesn't even actually allow an electrical hookup for a camper trailer, period. That it's considered a campsite.
All right, so I know you, I've saw the electric, electricity. So you're electrically hooked up. And it's right now self-contained, these people, when they, they have their own pots and they, what do they do? Somewhere to dump the stuff? Is that what they do right now? There, there's no septic there right now?
No.
All right, so all the, all those campers are self-contained? All right, okay, all right. And you're in a flood plain. If you have a problem, you just move the campers up, up the hill?
That's what we've done before.
That house across from where those campers are, is that your house?
No, sir.
The, the house up on the hill belongs to somebody else?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
A question, if once you put your septic system in, will it be large enough to accommodate more than four R Vs?
No, four is what we're applying for.
That's what you're applying for.
Once, if it's approved.
If it's approved, if it's not, well.
Right, gotcha. Okay, just that was just a question.
I mean, it's been our plan to, to actually go there and camp.
Right.
Four, since we've had it.
Yeah.
And we've been shut down severely.
Any other questions for the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't understand. You've been shut down.
Well, with a complaint.
Oh?
Yeah, so that's what this is all about.
Do you have neighbors that have complained? Is that the?
We have one neighbor that has complained and has called the E.Q. on us four times. All bogus, but got the line. Pre-survey is done since two thousand twenty-one.
I've seen the property. I'll tell you what, I, it's gorgeous. I, I really like that.
We like it too, sir.
We just like to use it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so no further questions to anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We move this forward to public hearing.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will vote. That passage answered. We'll see you next month. Now, Nikki, are we supposed to go over the one that was sent back tonight or wait till next month?
Best of my knowledge, we're supposed to discuss it this evening.
This evening, okay.
The case that was sent back to us from the, the Board of Supervisors is, and I, let me see, do we have a copy? Jamie's going to pull the, um so I sent to the Board of Supervisors on April twenty first for their meeting, the recommendation from the planning commission because on March twenty-fourth, the public hearing was held for case twenty-five, S.U.P. three fifty-three, which was Donald Applegate. We've referred to this application many times this evening. It's located on Route sixty. At the March twenty-fourth meeting, there were three, two conditions that were added to the list of eleven and one, number five, which was modified from fifteen to ten parked vehicles, not fifteen inoperable, but ten parked. An additional condition which addressed privacy fence to be installed should there be any removal of natural vegetation on the property. And number seven, a holding tank shall be installed to hold any fluids with a catch basin. The information that was received by me from the Board of Supervisors was in regards to condition number six, the privacy fence to be installed should there be any removal of natural vegetation. And condition thirteen, which states that the applicant and landowner understand the condition and agrees to the condition. Number thirteen, the applicant and landowner, that's in relation to the application that's taken. So Mr. Applegate is the applicant and the landowner for this S.U.P. request. So I'm not aware of the questions that the Board of Supervisors had in regard to that one. But the privacy fence, it wasn't specific enough or it wasn't?
Well, we put that in as, because of the, it's timbered right now, standing timber.
Is the timber on Mr. Applegate's property or on the Applegate, on the property adjacent to?
It's on his also.
Okay.
Yeah, the other property is completely timbered, but it was timbered on Mr. Applegate's too.
And it states privacy fence to be installed should there be any removal of natural vegetation on the property. And this is my memo, my cover sheet to the Board of Supervisors. Y'all would press the presentation button? I think it'll come.
Got it, okay.
All right.
Yes.
I had minutes at a meeting. I watched the meeting and I think it was just a confusion and verbiage on number thirteen. I think it was.
Thirteen, okay.
Neighbors would have to agree and that. So I, I think it might have just been misread, I think, if you read.
Okay, all right. Well, that, that simplifies it if that's the situation. In this case, the applicant is a landowner, right?
Yes, sir.
Well. One thing I heard him about talking about was just the fence being put up. That's, that's what I'm saying that as we come back from the Board of Supervisors, one of the fence.
Oh, no matter whether he got the timber.
Yeah, you can talk, call Joe Chambers and talk to him.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, I don't know. We discussed the fence. Neighbors, it's ninety-five acres of woods. I don't know what we're protecting. I don't see where a fence would do a thing. I, I understand that that, one of the concerns was in the future, they may want to come and build on that land. If you've got ninety-five acres and you must build on that property line, maybe you should build a fence. It's just woods. There's nothing to fence off at the moment. The nearest house is eight hundred plus feet away.
Well, let's address thirteen and change that one, at least for now.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Can't the Board amend the conditions without having it come back to the planning commission? I mean, if they wanted, if they wanted a planning, if they wanted a privacy fence, couldn't they just? I mean, can they do that? I mean, is that, or is that not protocol?
The best of my knowledge, they would have the ability to review the conditions just as the.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I guess I'm curious to find out that if that's all that they wanted, why didn't they just change it? I mean, I, I don't see why. We, we've got the same opinion. I've got the same opinion he does. I, after having seen everything, I don't know why they need a privacy fence unless he took down the vegetation. That's why we sent it up there that way. But if they want something different, I mean, why don't they just put in what they want?
I was unable to attend the meeting last week. I was out of the office all week. I did not receive a memo from the Board of Supervisors in regards to this, but maybe Supervisor Allen, do you have anything else to add? You were, you were present last week, correct?
Yeah, I know he said that he was worried, but he wanted to build a fence. He wanted to send it back to us.
Okay.
The planning commission to change that on the fence.
He, he's putting the onus on us.
Now, the, the, I don't know if a neighbor is close by.
Neighbor lives in Maryland.
I know it's, no, it's another house just up a road, just a half.
Eight hundred plus feet away.
I'm, that's what I'm thinking is far enough away, but I don't know.
Those neighbors were also not at the public hearing.
The, the property in question surrounds the house.
Yeah.
It's all timbered. I'm sort of like Calvin. I mean,
Yeah.
we put a caveat in there if he were to remove any of the timber that surrounds a house, that he would have to put a privacy fence on. But his plans were not to do anything. I mean, he asked us that.
It's right down at the end of the four lane highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If the fusion was on thirteen, could we just take out the landowner and just say the applicant? Understand? Would that resolve it?
This condition is a standard condition in all of the S.U.P. applications and conditions. It has been standard in the conditions prior to my arrival and working for Buckingham County. As I said, the applicant and landowner is in relation to the application such as Chairman Bickford, if you owned a piece of property and I wanted to operate an auto garage, which would never happen because I don't know how to fix anything, but you would be the landowner, I would be the applicant. So as we move through the process, if the, if it were approved, you and I both understand our responsibilities for this permit request. That, that, this is not adjoining or adjacent landowners. This is.
Right, I understand. But what I'm saying is because this is, the applicant is a landowner, do you even need to outland owner?
Would it set a precedence for the remaining applications that we would take?
Well, I don't know because I, I didn't see the confusion myself. I'm just asking.
And, and it may just have been as Commissioner Backrack mentioned, just the verbiage and maybe the conversation and discussion that was held. Again, I was not here and I have not watched the minutes of the meeting. So that just may have been some other point of confusion because this is a standard condition that's on all of their permits. But number six, the privacy fence, let me ask Supervisor Allen again, they, so the privacy fence. privacy fence, the matter would be that it sh, must be installed no matter what? So is that what the request is from the Board of Supervisors?
But I took it, won't, yeah, I know it's Mr. Chambers.
It wasn't if the vegetation, they're asking for.
Where, the, along Route sixty or?
Hey, I don't know, all I know is he said to change it back, moved it back to the planning commission to redo it.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What would be, what would be wrong with us, our saying, we've decided to send this back, back, we'll hold on now, back to the board? And if they want to change that condition, go for it. I don't know, I'm not trying to be smart or anything, but I mean, it, as a matter of fact, if you recall the conversation, um, we brought up the privacy fence when we talked to Mr. Applegate, I believe his name is, right?
That's correct.
And, and referring to Mr. Applegate, we don't have him here this evening, so we would, yeah.
But I mean, when we had that conversation, um, and I think I was the one that brought up the fact that, would you be willing to put in a privacy fence? He wasn't opposed to it.
No, he wasn't, but it's still not necessary.
Yeah, it was, it was our recommendation, is, well, if it's not necessary, why, why would you do it?
Until he, if he were to remove the timber.
So I mean, it's not like he's opposed to doing that sort of thing, so if we send it back, with all due respect, to the Board and said, and, and tell them that, you know, our, our motion is to keep it like it is, however, if they, if they feel strongly enough about that condition, you know, that they should, they should go ahead and change it. I mean, I don't, I don't know what you think, but I, I mean, is that, are they going to fire all of us for doing that or just me?
Nikki, let me ask you this. We really don't know. You aren't here, Dan has given the best he can from memory, Calvin did the same thing. What if we table it and just ask for them, okay, what specific things, conditions do you want us to look at?
I will go back to the county administrator, ask for more specifics, and what we'll do is place this on the agenda for May twenty-seventh, asking Mr. Applegate to come back and participate in the conversation.
Just in case, yes.
And regardless of whether this is changed or not, since it has been reintroduced to the planning commission, we would still need to hold a public hearing, so asking Mr. Apple, getting clarification from the Board, asking Mr. Applegate.
You mean, he has to go, if we were not to change?
He will have to have another, uh, public hearing before he can get, so that would mean a discussion, let's just tentatively, we invite, we find out exactly what the specifics are as the request from the Board of Supervisors, we place him on the agenda with this item